Is the microphone working? Yes, now it's working. Again, welcome to the first meeting of the city council, the new city council, for the year 1914.
1914.
You are listening, great. For the year 2014. I am very, very happy to be here, and obviously the smiling faces of the members of the city council shows exactly the same sentiment. I feel, and my colleagues probably feel the same way, that we're gonna have a great year, that we are going to accomplish a great deal with our new mayor, and that we are going to work together to improve the quality of life in our city. And I hope that you give us the chance to do that and support, and I hope that, like tonight, you come to every meeting and you speak your mind, because we expect that, and you let us know how you feel. And again, I think this year is gonna be very profitable. I think we're gonna accomplish a great deal, and again, I'm very happy to be here. Let's begin the meeting. We'll have the roll call.
Council Vasquez.
Present.
Council LaPlante.
Here.
Council Tumi.
Here.
Council Reyes.
Council Reyes excuse herself.
Noted. Council Monte.
Here.
Council Aquino.
Present.
Council Brunel.
Present.
Council Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
And Council President.
Present. Let's end up for a moment of silence. I ask that those who are present here and those who are at home to put us in your prayer so that we will receive wisdom to do the right things for the city, and that the right decisions are done every time taking the citizens of our great city of Lawrence into account. This is the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Tumi.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see it? Has everyone read the minutes?
December 17th.
Are there any questions on December 17th? Are there any questions if there are no?
Motion approved.
I'm sorry, December 17th and January 2nd. There are two. Do we make one motion or two separate motions?
One motion would be fine.
I would like to entertain a motion. So move second, probably second. Any questions, comments, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. We are gonna go into public participation, and the first person is gonna be H. Malley, 53 Chestnut Street.
Chester.
Chester. I would like to remind those who are participating in public participation to please address your comments or remarks directed to the city council and not anyone in particular in the city council. So, thank you.
Good evening, honorable members of the Lawrence City Council. Our citizen under siege, seven armed robbery in our city on safe streets. There are compelling reason that Mayor Rivera and this council need to stand up in support of our Lawrence Police Department and their union. Mayor Rivera must know 83,000 citizens of our city support our senior officers and their union. We demand of this council support of our police department, campaign of the promise of the safe city and safe Lawrence. Our citizen drive in our city witnessing tremendous job by our DPW, hardworking, low pay. We support our DPW in their leadership and their upcoming contract negotiation. Mayor Rivera must know in his watch our teachers are three years without any contract. The wonderful teachers' union, they have the super job and super teachers such as Mr. Mendez from Lawrence High School on medical leaves. Our firefighters need support of this council and Mayor Rivera in their contract negotiation. Remember, you're elected by our citizen from District A to District F. You are not appointed by Mayor Rivera. So, improve quality of our life and support our the union of the police officers and our DPW. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Ismael Rondon, 6 Hamlet Street.
Buenas noches, honorables consejales. Voy a hablar en español. Mi manejo del inglés, la lengua de Robert Frost, no es muy buena.
Can you hold on a moment to see if anyone?
He's saying good evening. He asked me to translate for him.
He asked?
Yes, every time.
Okay.
He's saying good evening, city councilors. My English is limited, so I need to speak in Spanish.
I'll translate, if you want me to.
It's okay.
Honorable Consejo de la Ciudad de Lawrence.
Very quickly.
Quiero expresarle lo siguiente sobre la automatización del proceso de lectura de medidores.
Repítalo, por favor.
Honorable Consejo de la Ciudad.
Honorable City Council.
Sobre la automatización del proceso de lectura de medidores de agua.
He wants to talk about the meters that are being put in for the water.
Quiero expresarle lo siguiente.
He wants to express the following.
Primero.
First.
El Departamento de Agua de la Ciudad.
The Department of Water.
No ha presentado a los usuarios del servicio que ofrece.
Has not presented the services that they offer.
La ley, ordenanza, regla o regulación.
By the charter or ordinance or regulation that guides them.
Que los obliga a permitir.
That is coercing us to permit.
Que instalen en nuestra propiedad un dispositivo.
To install in our property meter.
Que monitorea el uso que hacemos del agua.
That monitors the use of our water.
Si no existe una ley que lo mande.
If there is no law that mandates it.
Entonces no es mandatorio.
Then it's not mandatory.
Observación, no me estoy refiriendo, no me estoy refiriendo a los medidores nuevos.
I am not referring to the new meters.
Estoy de acuerdo con la sustitución de medidores.
I am in agreement with the substitution of the meters.
Me refiero al dispositivo que instalan fuera de la propiedad, fuera de la casa, en la parte exterior de las casas.
He is referring to the meters that are put outside of the homes, of the houses.
Conocido como NTU, Meteor Transmission Unit.
And that one I don't need to translate.
Segundo.
Second.
La automatización del proceso de lectura de medidores de agua.
The automation of the meters.
No es necesaria.
It's not necessary.
Con ella se pretende resolver un problema que no existe.
Taking this step or using this strategy is to try to resolve a problem that does not exist.
Es algo como hacer que una persona sana.
It's like having a person who is completely healthy.
Tome medicina.
Drink medication.
Es un buen negocio para quien la fabrica o quien vende la medicina.
It's good commerce for whoever manufactures or sells the medicine.
No para quien la consume.
But not for the person that's consuming it.
Observación.
Observation.
Si las autoridades de un pueblo.
If the authorities of a city.
Se endeudan y gastan el dinero de los contribuyentes.
Are misspending the money.
En algo innecesario.
In things that are not necessary.
No tienen calidad moral para aumentar los impuestos.
Then you do not have the right to keep increasing taxes.
O exigir sacrificios tributarios al pueblo.
Or to continue to ask for contributions from the city, from the citizens.
Venció mi tiempo?
Sí.
Thank you.
Pero eso era.
Gracias.
Está satisfecho.
Tercero.
Third.
Podría violar nuestro derecho a la privacidad.
It would violate our right to privacy.
Consagrado en la cuarta enmienda de la Constitución.
Which is protected by the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States.
El Departamento de Agua de la Ciudad.
The Department of Water of our city.
No es la agencia de seguridad nacional.
It's not the agency of national security.
Solo debe saber qué cantidad de agua consumimos.
It only needs to know how much water we consume.
No cómo, ni en qué.
Not how and in what.
Ni cuándo.
Or when.
La usamos.
We use it.
Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Okay, gracias, sir.
Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street.
Good evening, councilors, my name, for those of you who don't know who I am, Dick Russell. I live at 34 Cross Street. Now to try to save the city some money. Is the city gonna stop fighting the release of the De Adamo Papers to Tom Duggan? The bill has to be around 40 grand right now. I think it'd be a good idea to cut our financial losses by giving Duggan what he wants and is legally entitled to. Are we gonna save the city a lot of money and resolve the Tom Sapienza and Tim Atwood situations before they get tremendously expensive for the city? Ernie, you council is up to speed on Chapter 12-16 of the city ordinance. A dollar fee for permits issued under this ordinance is a joke several years ago. I inquired in several city hall offices about how many permits were issued and how much money was collected, and I got the proverbial deer in the headlights stare. Change the fee from a dollar a year to anything that encroaches on city's airspace over city's streets to 50 bucks a year and force it, and it's a pretty sizable chunk of change in the city coffers. Another source of cash would be to unload vacant lots that the city uses for parking. Get some serious development on them and get some serious tax money. I know this one will cause a real stir. What's wrong with privatizing the city parking garages? Sell the garages outright, we can tax them, but at least we won't have to worry about our parking money going south to wherever or to somebody's political coffers. I bring this up because I don't, won't get too many more chances to critique the former occupant of the third floor, the corner office on the third floor. No one knew about his honesty, I mean, his on his whereabouts for the last several weeks in December. The question I have is, is he legally entitled to collect his mileage for the entire month of December if he wasn't around doing his job? I bring these issues up in the interest of saving the city some money. One last question. Whatever happened to the magnet signs that the contract snowplow operators used to have on their vehicles? The reason I bring this up is I had an issue with a private plow operator who deliberately aimed at and hit my trash barrel with me five feet away from it. He swerved around the next set of barrels up the street. I could not prove who he was. I made no complaint. If I had a number on the sign, I would've had him. Thank you for my, the time tonight.
Thank you. The next line is Fernando Landon, 32 Lawrence Street.
Good evening, council members. I see, I see a couple of my favorite councilors back in their seats and some of my old councilors. First of all, number one, I give praise to our councillor, I mean, to Mayor Danny Gere that seems like Lawrence has gotten to a good step. He had been eliminated, what you call, eliminated salaries to our police officers who are not working. I understand that he's gonna get more police, but I would like the councilors and the mayor to realize that when you hire police, don't send the police to, now, most of these police officers are my friends, but we have police officer who comes and disrespect your house. Come and, I had my grandkids at my, at my house one day. You're gonna use the F word, no, I don't like it. I can't hit him because he's a cop. And I'm, I came back from Florida a little more, more composed and all, and, oh my god, I forgot already. Oh, councillor, those are parking space that you have where you put the quarters? Some of these people are putting their quarters and stuff, and the tickets are coming out, and they get tickets, you know, and from, from where I live at 32 Lawrence, they're doing that, and I'll be here for a while before I retire back to Florida, so you know you're gonna hear about me a little bit. Most of you'll know how I talk when I really wanna talk, but, you know. But even though comes from molestation, comes from, I wanna work you guys back because I think four years ago I was with you guys. Council LaPlante, all you, God bless you, and let's hope that Lawrence gets better.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move one item, item 314-13, out of sequence, and I would like to entertain a motion.
Motion to take document 314-13 out of order.
Second.
Second, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Anybody? No? Okay. The ayes have it. Yes, 314, 314-13.
The offensive line on the front, running back in the back, and the QBs are QBs. Good, we're all, we're all gonna be in the part of quarterback. So, councilors, we can get these guys lined up. We got the beef tonight, the big guys, from Central Catholic High School. This is the award-winning Super Bowl champions, and, councilors, I'm delighted and privileged to actually, to actually read this resolution before you, that you all signed. This is, Central Catholic is one of our jewels in our city, and it's right that we should, we should recognize when they do, these individuals and others have their achievements in our city, and so it's with great pride and pleasure that I, that we read this resolution. And I just, now, before we get started here, we got the, the coaches here, Chuck Adamopoulos, very good, and our co-captains, are they near me? DeAndre, could you come near me, please? And Cody. All right, there you are. So we got the captains here, so you guys who want to be close by. So, be it resolved that we, the members of the city council of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution hereby applaud and honor the Central Catholic High School varsity football team for their success as the 2013 Massachusetts Super Bowl champions, and be it known that whereas the Raider High School football coach, Chuck Adamopoulos, and the 90-player, 213 Red Raider squad led by senior captains, help me here, DeAndre Drummond, Myrie, and Cody Demers completed the 2013 season with a winning record of 11 and 1, and are the first Central Catholic team to win 11 games in a single season. Whereas on their way to greater success, the Raiders were undefeated in the Merrimack Valley Conference and captured the Merrimack Valley Conference Division 1 championship. Whereas in the new Massachusetts football playoffs, the Raiders defeated two league champions, acting Boxborough, the dual county league champions, by a score of 35 to nothing, and defeated perennial football powerhouse Everett High School, Raider Boston League champions, by a score of 20 to 15 to advance to Division 1. Whereas on Saturday, December 7, 2013, the Raiders defeated Catholic Conference champion Severian High School by a 34 to 17 score in the state's Super Bowl game at Gillette Stadium, and became the first sole Division 1 Massachusetts state champions under the new MIAA football playoff system. Whereas in addition to their athletic achievement, all of the senior class members of the Raider football team are bound for college demonstrating the ability to balance the demands of success on the gridiron while maintaining a commitment to excellence in the classroom. And by the way, these are all seniors that are here today. Central Catholic High School is a longstanding and cherished Lawrence-based educational institution. The Raider's Super Bowl victory again brings great pride to the city of Lawrence, and I also want to acknowledge one other coach that's here. Coach, what'd you name again?
Nelson Olvalas.
Nelson Olvalas, and you're from Lawrence, right?
Yes.
Coach, all right. So, we're, be resolved that we, the members of the Lawrence City Council, by and through this resolution hereby honor the achievement of the 2013 Central Catholic Red Raider football team, and hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts to be affixed on this, the 21st day of January in the year of our Lord, 2014. And I'm gonna, this is our first meeting, I'm gonna read all the councilor's names. Council President Modesto Maldonado, Council Vice President Nilka Alvarez Rodriguez, Council Sanio Monte, Council Roger Tumi, Council O'Nato Aquino, Council Alina Connor Brunel, Council Kendris Vasquez, Council Estela Reyes, and I'm Council Mark LaPlante. Congratulations, fellas.
Thank you. One team. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Keep up the great work, I hope.
Thanks, Coach.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. Congratulations, great team.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, buddy.
Congratulations.
I thought you were playing, you're so young. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, let's go to public hearings. Yeah. I think we got a couple of you. Yes, okay. Okay, and then I ask a motion.
Yes, señor, he said he was gonna settle to.
You took the captain's open public.
We usually don't get stuff back at times.
Okay. 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 Thank you, thank you.
Okay, there are several items in the public hearings, and we're gonna try to move as fast as possible. Document 297-12, Mr. Clerk.
Document 297-2012, notices hereby given the city council. We'll hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21, 2014, in council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by deleting the following paragraph from the handicap parking section. Farnham Street, north side from 1.212 feet easterly of the intersection of Phillips Street to 1.232 feet easterly of the intersection of Phillips Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published, January 8. Open public hearing.
Is there anyone in the, in the public that would like to speak in regard to this document? If there is none, I would like to entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
So, we know for sure there's no one in the street that we?
I think that Mrs. Brunel probably can answer that, because there's always a report from the, from a police officer.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Back in December, at the December 5 meeting, we had gone over this item, the sign is being removed. The person had moved from one part of the city to another, and we granted her a spot at the new, this next item is very similar, but it was the removal of the sign because they no longer needed it there, yeah.
Okay, but there was no one else on the block that needed that. Sometimes people think if you put up a parking space or handicap parking, that it's only they, they can use it, but other people are able to use it as well, not the ownership with only one person. All right, thank you.
Any other comments? If there is none, let's take a vote. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it.
If they have a clerk, they can park there.
May I, let me interject, I think, that's why I ask for additional participation. If, if people would like to, if somebody would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote.
No, 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 it was just a comment that was being made here, I just, that's fine.
A point of personal privilege, I just like to make sure that people understand that even when we approve a handicap parking, that does not mean that no one else can park there. If they have a placard, they can park there, you know, and the person can't say, hey, you gotta move, this is my spot.
Well, if I'm the home, if I live in that property, and, and I'm on 30, if I'm on this address on 246 Farnham Street, and this is my parking spot because I'm, I'm disabled and I was the one who requested for that parking spot to be put in front of my house because it's my parking spot. Here at City Hall, it's my placard that says that I was the one who wanted that parking spot there, so somebody else has parked there and I can't come tell them to move?
Nope.
Well, we need to fix that.
Well, that is, I believe that, I believe that that is a state law, and any changes would have to be.
As long as they have a placard, they can use it. That makes no sense.
Okay, we can, at other, in other occasion, we can probably talk about that particular matter. Document 289-A-13.
Document 289-A-2013. Notices hereby given the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21, in council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence by deleting a paragraph from the municipal code handicap parking regarding Ridge Road, north side from 1.20 feet easterly of the intersection of Kendall Street to 1.40 feet easterly of the intersection of Kendall Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published, January 8.
Anyone in the public would like to speak in regard to this particular document? If there is none, I would like to entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
So, we know for sure there's no one in the street that we?
I think that Mrs. Brunel probably can answer that, because there's always a report from the, from a police officer.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Back in December, at the December 5 meeting, we had gone over this item, the sign is being removed. The person had moved from one part of the city to another, and we granted her a spot at the new, this next item is very similar, but it was the removal of the sign because they no longer needed it there, yeah.
Okay, but there was no one else on the block that needed that. Sometimes people think if you put up a parking space or handicap parking, that it's only they, they can use it, but other people are able to use it as well, not the ownership with only one person. All right, thank you.
Any other comments? If there is none, let's take a vote. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it.
If they have a clerk, they can park there.
May I, let me interject, I think, that's why I ask for additional participation. If, if people would like to, if somebody would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote.
No, 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 it was just a comment that was being made here, I just, that's fine.
A point of personal privilege, I just like to make sure that people understand that even when we approve a handicap parking, that does not mean that no one else can park there. If they have a placard, they can park there, you know, and the person can't say, hey, you gotta move, this is my spot.
Well, if I'm the home, if I live in that property, and, and I'm on 30, if I'm on this address on 246 Farnham Street, and this is my parking spot because I'm, I'm disabled and I was the one who requested for that parking spot to be put in front of my house because it's my parking spot. Here at City Hall, it's my placard that says that I was the one who wanted that parking spot there, so somebody else has parked there and I can't come tell them to move?
Nope.
Well, we need to fix that.
Well, that is, I believe that, I believe that that is a state law, and any changes would have to be.
As long as they have a placard, they can use it. That makes no sense.
Okay, we can, at other, in other occasion, we can probably talk about that particular matter. Document 289-A-13.
Document 289-A-2013. Notices hereby given the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21, in council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence by deleting a paragraph from the municipal code handicap parking regarding Ridge Road, north side from 1.20 feet easterly of the intersection of Kendall Street to 1.40 feet easterly of the intersection of Kendall Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published, January 8.
Anyone in the public would like to speak in regard to this particular document? If there is none, I would like to entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, the court discussion.
I just wanna just make one thing known, the 289-A and B work together. The person that was at 31 Ridge moved to 77 Cambridge, and so when that individual called me up, they said, we're leaving 31 Cambridge, we moved to, I'm sorry, Ridge, moved to Cambridge, can we get a hand with that placard? And I realized that 31 Ridge Road is not in my district, but she made that phone call to me, and it just made a lot of sense, and at this point forward, counselor, I just want to let you know I'll be working more closely with you. This was something that just kinda happened as they worked together on these things, I'll make sure.
She had called me on this item a while back, because this was back in the fall that she had moved, and you had already placed it, I guess, on the agenda, so I had let you, but this was something that she had called me back like August or September on.
That's fine. Can we make this an emergency as well? And I should've done the same thing for 297-12.
Wait the 30 days.
I was waiting 30 days, and I will come back on the earlier one, I should've thought about the waiver of 30 days in the previous one, but I'd like to make a motion to also waive the 30-day requirement on 289-A.
For the removal?
For the removal?
I think you would like to wait for 30 days on, on whether the person needs it.
Okay, so you're making, you're making an amendment to the motion to?
They moved to another part of the city?
I accept the amendment.
Okay. Yep. So the, to waive the 30 days, it has been made and second. Okay, any other comments by any members of the city council?
Just my comment would be, Mr. President, that in these, to remove them, I didn't see the urgency, as opposed to the, the ones where they now want it located, they would be, that would be an urgent matter.
Okay.
But I'll go along with it.
Okay. Okay, let's take a vote. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nay. The ayes have it. Document 289-B-13.
Document 289-B-2013.
And it's for that home, for that specific resident. If somebody else wants to, because on Ridge Road, um, we need to take out that parking spot because, you know, I mean, so somebody else can claim that spot? Somebody can come in and say, oh, I'm handicapping, I wanna park there?
If they have a clerk, they can park there.
May I, uh, let me interject, I think, that's why I asked for additional participation. If, if people would like to, if somebody would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote...
No, 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 it was just a comment that was made here, I just...
It's a point of, of personal privilege, I just like to make sure that people understand that even when we, um, approve a handicap parking, that does not mean that no one else can park there. If they have a placard, they can park there, you know, and the person can't say, hey, you gotta move, this is my spot.
Well, if I'm the home, if I live in that property, and, and I'm on 30, if I'm on this address, on, uh, 246 Farnham Street, and this is my parking spot, because I'm, I'm disabled, and I was the one who requested for that parking spot to be put in front of my house, because it's my parking spot. Here at City Hall, it's my placard that says that I was the one who wanted that parking spot there. So, somebody else has parked there, and I can't come tell them to move?
Nope.
Well, we need to fix that.
Well, that is, I believe that, I believe that that is a state law, and, and any changes will have to be...
That makes no sense.
Okay, um, we can, at other, in other occasion, we can probably talk about that particular matter. Uh, document 289-A-13.
Document 289-A-2013. Notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, in Council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city ordinance by deleting a paragraph from the municipal code handicap parking regarding Ridge Road, North Side, from 1.20 feet easterly of the intersection of Kendall Street to 1.40 feet easterly of the interse- intersection of Kendall Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published, January 8th.
Anyone in the public would like to speak in regard to this particular document? If there is none, I would like to enter turn a motion.
Motion approved?
Second. Okay, the court discussion, discussion?
I just wanna just make one thing known, the 2989-A and B work together. The person that was at 31 Ridge moved to 77 Cambridge, and so when that individual called me up, they said, we're leaving 31 Cambridge, we've moved to, I'm sorry, Ridge, moved to Cambridge, can we get a hand with that placard? And I realize that 31 Ridge Road is not in my district, but she made that phone call to me, and it just made a lot of sense. And at this point forward, Counselor, I just want to let you know, I'll be working more closely with you. I, this was, uh, something that just kinda happened as they worked together on these things, I'll make sure.
She had called me on this item a while back, because this was back in the fall that she had moved, and you had already placed it, I guess, on the agenda, um, so I had let you, but this was something that she had called me back, like, August or September on.
That's fine, can we make this an emergency as well, and I should've done the same thing for 297-12.
Waive the 30 days?
I was way the 30 days, and I will come back on the earlier one, I should've thought about the waiving the 30 days in a previous one. But I'd like to make a, a motion to also waive the 30-day requirement on 29, 289-A.
For the removal?
I think you would like to waive for 30 days on, on whether the person needs it.
Okay, so you're making, you're making an amendment to the motion to...
They moved to another part of the city?
I accept the amendment.
Okay.
Yep.
So, the, uh, to waive the 30 days, it has been made and seconded. Okay, any other comments by any members of the City Council?
Uh, just, uh, my comment would be, um, Mr. President, that, um, indeed, to remove them, I didn't see the urgency as opposed to the, the ones where they now want it located, they would be, that would be an urgent matter.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll go along with it.
Okay. Okay, let's take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nay. The ayes have it. Uh, document 289-B-13.
Document 289-B-2013, notices hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, in Council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by adding a new paragraph to the handicap parking ordinance citing Cambridge Street, South Side, from 1.190 feet, 195 feet easterly of the intersection of South Union Street to 1.215 feet east of South Union, the intersection of South Union Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published, January 8th.
Anyone in the public who would like to address, uh, this particular document? If there is none, I would like to enter turn a motion.
Second, I'd like to also make an amendment to waive the 30 days.
So moved, I mean, I accept the, the amendment.
Okay, um, anyone in the, uh, Council that would like to make any comments or remarks? If there is none, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, anyone against, say nay. The ayes have it.
Council President, um, sorry, it's so difficult, first night. 297-12, like, take that off the table for the purp-, I'm on the prevailing side of the purpose of making the 30-day, uh, remove the 30-day waiver on that.
Which document?
297-12.
The 30-day waiver?
To take it off the 30-day requirement, to remove it, the first one.
Okay, there is a motion on document 297-12 to waive the 30 days, uh, if you ask me properly, second?
That, that's fine, it's to take off the waiv-, the waiver of the 30 days. That's, that's fine, it's an amendment, a second amendment to waive, to waive the 30 days, that's fine, I accept.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Uh, document 290-13.
Document 290 of 2013. Notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, 2014, in City Council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinance by adding the following new paragraph to Section 1036-330 minute parking, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. To be inserted in proper order concerning Lawrence Street, West Side, from 1.20 feet southerly of the intersection of Arlington Street to 1.60 feet southerly of the intersection of Arlington Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on January 8th.
Anyone in the public that would like to address this particular document? If there is none, I would like to enter turn a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It has been properly seconded, any comments or remarks?
Uh, just, Mr. President, I would just like to hear a little bit more about what parking is now being asked for.
Okay, um...
Sorry.
I know parking's a big issue throughout the city, so...
I'm just looking for the document number, I'm sorry.
291-13.
Yeah, this was, um... Thank you. They were looking for two 30-minute spaces, um... Initially, they were looking for, um, two 30 minutes and two 1-hours, and the attorney, um, the attorney, the officer had gone out there and said that the two 30 minutes, it was appropriate space and appropriate need for that, and he denied the two 1-hour spaces. And, um, it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation as modified for him for two 30-minute spaces in front of that establishment at 326-334 Lawrence Street.
So, that's a business?
It's a business, yep.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any, any other remarks? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. Document 291-13.
Document 291-2013, notices hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing Tuesday, January 21st, 2014, in Council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to be amended by adding a new paragraph to the handicap parking code to be inserted in proper order concerning Broadway, West Side, from 1.105 feet southerly of the intersection of South Union Street to 1.125 feet southerly of the intersection of South Union Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Anyone in the public that would like to address their remarks to this particular document? If there is none, I would like to enter turn a motion.
Motion approved?
Who would second? Properly second, comments?
Is this an urgent situation also, do you need to waive the 30 days?
Uh...
This as well?
I would recommend to waive the 30 days, we, that's been the custom with the handicap parking, we've been waiving the 30 days.
Oh, okay, that sounds good.
Would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, make a motion to amend, to waive the 30 days as well.
I'll accept it from the amendment.
Second?
And just to, um, I know some of us weren't here for the December meeting, so I just wanna refresh people. Um, when this went out for ordering the public hearing, we did note that there is not a placard on file for this one because it's at a business establishment that has a high handicap clientele, so they're looking for it on the street, but because they have many handicap people that come there, that's why they wanted this, so unlike at a home where there's a placard on file, it's, it's in front of the business, um, just so people are aware of that.
So, Benny Guzman is the, uh, business owner?
Exactly.
Any other comments? If there is none, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. Uh, document 310-13.
Document 310-2013, notices hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, in Council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by adding a new paragraph to the municipal code, uh, concerning prohibiting parking in certain streets at all times regarding Eaton Street, East Side, from 1.78 feet northerly of the intersection of Andover Street to 1.90 feet northerly of the intersection of Andover Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Anyone in the public that would like to ma-, to make their remarks to this document? If there is none, I would like to enter turn a motion.
Motion to approve?
Any second? Properly second?
Discussion?
Yes.
So, I mean, everywhere, people are fighting for parking, I'm just wondering...
Sure, I can give you the specifics on this example, um, at 54 Eaton Street, there is a, um, parking spot under statute is supposed to be 20 feet wide, there's a piece of land about 12 feet long between two driveways. It's not big enough to support a car, but people continually insist on parking there, and it blocks two different, it blocks the driveway to a business, and it blocks the driveway to a homeowner. It's something that actually, the signage was put up already by the police department as it was deemed emergency, because it was literally blocking this lady's driveway. They've painted the curb yellow, they've put up the sign, it's a 12-foot piece of curb between two driveways, it doesn't, but even though it's...
Makes sense.
Yeah, you had to put the thing there because, um, people just kept parking there. Even though you, you'd be impeding into her driveway, she couldn't back out, um, so that's something that Officer Scanlon had gone out, visually verified that there is a real problem there, met with the homeowner, and made the recommendation, um... So, we just need to formally add that to the ordinances to support it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. Uh, communications, uh, you have a document in front of you, uh, document 514, the resignation letter of Abel Vargas from the Greater Lawrence Technical School Committee. There are several, I don't think we, any of us probably had, had the time to read the document that was provided to us by the city attorney. And it is important that we review this. I believe that there are some precedent, uh, if you can look at it on the second page, there's a precedent of a previous resignation from a member of the, uh, uh, school committee of the vocational school. And, uh, I, I think we need to review this, and it seems to me that, uh, that we may not have the time to do that tonight.
Motion to table?
Uh, yes, uh, what I would like to do is table it, um, then, uh, discuss that at the next meeting so that we can, uh, have plenty of time to review it, and we can have also the city attorney to come and speak to us as to which way would be the best to fill this position. But again, I, if you look at the second page, he mentioned the fact that there has been, uh, previous resignation, and it was done in a certain manner. Uh, this was done in, uh, 2007.
I don't happen to have that.
Neither do I.
Copy of this?
No, we don't have that.
It's not in our package.
Oh, I'm the only one, sorry.
I have copies of the minutes from that meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, I will make this available to you, um...
I can email it to you.
Yes, and, and then you will have the, the chance to review it.
Mr. President, question, what, what's the purpose of this now, this letter?
Uh, to replace Mr. Vargas.
For the procedures to replace him?
Uh, the procedures, I believe, are in place by precedent, but I think that we need to review it and become familiar with it. And also, what I would like to do is have the city attorney come at the next meeting so that if we may have any questions or concerns, that we, uh, we can ask him. Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, well, can somebody make a motion so that we can invite the city attorney to, uh, come to our next, uh...
I'd like to make a motion to send the letter to the city attorney to be here for our next, um, council meeting so that we may discuss the resignation of Abel Vargas.
Uh, who, who would second the motion?
Second.
Properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Motion to table?
Yes, uh, motion to table?
If there's no further discussion, we have a second.
Okay.
Because once table, we can't talk anymore.
Is there anybody that would like to, if you have any questions before we table it? Nobody? Okay, then, there is, the motion has been made to table it, and it has been properly seconded, uh, all in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. Uh, the next item is item 1714, uh, we're gonna be addressed by our new mayor, Dan Rivera. Dan, welcome.
Thank you, Council President. Counselors, um, I just wanted, on your maiden, um, evening, to come before you and, uh, thank you for all that you've done to get where you're at, but also what you've done for the city, um, and to let you know that what I feel about today is that this is the beginning of a great partnership. We are in the process of trying to accomplish all the individual meetings with all the counselors, we wanna make sure that sure, uh, our agenda's your agenda, and your agenda is our agenda, we know that, and having been on that side. Um, I feel your pain, and I will try to cause you very little of it from my side. Um, not that we're always gonna agree, but just wanna know that, um, you know, I feel that you guys are my colleagues in a real way, because I think that's how we're gonna do better in our community, um, so we are gonna have, I'm gonna try my best to every meeting have one of our staff members in the hall when you guys are meeting, we're gonna do the best we can on that. Um, sometimes we might not meet up to it, but we, it's important for you guys, if you have a question, that somebody be here to take at least the gist of what you guys were talking about back to us, so, um, and back to me. So, I may not be around all the time, but some of my staff will be ready to talk to you. But again, I just wanna wish you a lot of luck, um, I'm a resource for you, just as I know that you guys will be a resource for me when I'm trying to figure things out, so just wanna take a moment, say thank you, and, uh, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking forward to really working together, and I am sure that the sentiment is the same. I, I think we can accomplish a great deal in, uh, in our next two years, and your four years, and, uh, I think it's gonna be wonderful, I believe that.
I agree. Thanks, I'll let you guys get back to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion to withdraw document 1714.
Second.
What was that?
Motion to withdraw.
The document, yeah.
Which one you withdrawing, all of them?
1714, no, just 1714.
Oh, okay.
Okay, this motion has been made and properly seconded, any comments? If none?
One of the things, if we wanna keep that on there, if he's gonna be making appearances down here, he can just work off of that document, just say, I wanna come down here and speak, I'm just an option. Or do you want to withdraw it, I'm just, I'm not sure if you've given it any thought. So, if the mayor says he wants to come down, instead of having to come, he already has a document here. Let's say something happens over the weekend, he wants to be able to speak on it for some reason, he misses the deadline to go ahead and put something on the agenda, at least if we have something tabled, we can always take it off the table, and he can come and speak on something, rather than having to...
I withdraw my second.
Would you like to, uh, table it? Would you like to make a motion to table it?
Motion to table?
Second.
Okay, the motion, uh, to table document 1714 has been made and properly seconded. If there is no other comments, uh, I would like to ask for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? There's none, the ayes have it. Uh, there's no appropriation, there's no committee's report right now. Yes, is this, is this, I can hear?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, and we're gonna take it.
That needs to be taken up today?
Okay, uh, document, uh, 322-13, we need to take this document as an emergency.
A motion to...
I would like to take it out of order, it's an emergency document.
So moved.
As an emergency?
There has been a motion to take document 322-13 out of order and as an emergency. Anybody would second the, uh...
Second.
I'm sorry?
We should be voting on Rule 17, not to... Suspend the rules.
Yes, okay.
So, I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, who second the motion to suspend the rule?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, now, the motion.
The other motion to...
Uh, Sandy?
Motion to take out of order and off the table, right? I mean, it's not tabled, just motion to take out of order.
To address, yeah.
Uh, who second the motion?
Second.
Okay, properly second, any comments?
322-13.
It's the, it's the first one in the new...
FY12-2014 for the Shannon Grant.
Okay, so he had, the motion has been made to take out of order, and it has been properly seconded. If there is no comment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's, should we take the vote again?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
We're good now.
Uh, the reason why this is required to be taken as an emergency is because the, um, the grand deadline submission, and we're gonna hear from, uh... From Mr. McAfee.
Art McCabe.
McCabe, sorry.
Mr. McAfee, that's pretty cool.
McCabe? Okay, uh, go ahead.
Thank you very much, um, I'm asking that it be accepted as an emergency matter. Uh, the city's been awarded another Shannon Grant, um, this is the eighth year in a row we've gotten it, and the third year in a row that it's been increased, which I think is a, is a vote of confidence from the state. The grant period starts January 1st, and it runs for the full calendar year, so in order to avoid a disruption of services, I'm asking that the, that the grant be accepted tonight, so we can actually, you know, work with our various partners. I've provided to you a, a summary of how we're allocating the funding for the Shannon Grant, and the, uh, brief description of various programs. The Shannon Grant and the SSYI Grant, which we're gonna deal with later, um, provides a, a full continuum of services, so we can deal, uh, with a number of community-based partners, I mean, the whole key to all these programs is collaboration and as much outreach as possible. So, with the Shannon Grant, it targets at-risk youth, um, which are the kids, you know, that, you run the usual risk, they sometimes they get in trouble, sometimes they don't, but it permits us to provide a coordination of services across the city and significant outreach. The SSYI Grant, which I'll talk about later, deals with the kids that have been in more serious trouble, whether they've been in the House of Correction, or dropped out of school, or whatever it is. But the combination of the two tools is invaluable and be able to provide services just across the board. Um, they're remarkably good programs, I think they've been phenomenally helpful to the city in providing a full range of services, and I would respectfully ask your acceptance of the Shannon Grant for 2014.
Well, um, I move that we approve the acceptance of this grant.
A motion is being made to approve the acceptance of the grant, it has been properly seconded.
A discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, does anybody have any questions for Mr. McCabe?
I just want to find the documentation, I apologize.
It's not, it's in our mailbox.
Oh, thank you. No, I, I've been supportive of the program in the past, I do think it's a good initiative, and I, I just didn't see exactly what had been filed with us, so, um... Yeah, I do, somebody handed me theirs, it's not in the package.
It was in the mailbox. It was in the mailbox.
Thank you. So, my question is just simply, the Community Development Office receives the general grant, and then you redistribute it to these agencies listed, is that...
Yeah, the, um, as I've mentioned a couple of times, I mean, I think the Community Development Department's uniquely situated to encourage the collaboration, which is critical to all these programs. So, we, we run the program, but we work very closely with the named partners, um, in the, in the, um, presentation I gave you. Police Department in both of these grants is phenomenally good partner with us, and we work very closely with them, you know, both for, for crime prevention, um, you know, we target hotspots, so within an area where there's, you know, increasing difficulty, or statistically, we can identify an area where trouble has either occurred or may occur. Um, we often coordinate services with them to, to, to avoid either, uh, potential crime, or when there has been a crime, go into a neighborhood and actually try to retain, prevent any type of retaliation or, you know, aftermath. So, um, um, you know, we, yeah, we, we coordinate and distribute to all. We're required to report to the state, so each of the partners has to give us a report periodically, and then we provide a, a compilation of the various reports and report on the overall progress within the city for the state.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. LaPlante?
Sure, so, uh, one quick question, are we gonna be taking 220-13 off the table as well? That's the Safer, Safe and Successful Youth Initiative grant? Would that be, for discussion, I saw that's in our, in our mailbox as well.
That was an existing matter, um, which we're, I'm asking that, that grant, we've just received another increase in that grant, um, so I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be asking you to take that off the table and hear that later on.
So, my, my comments are gonna roll to both of them, I just, just real quick, Lina, that we wanna get a little... that we wanna get over with, the storm gets too crazy outside, but, um, when I was on the, on the, on the mayor's transition team, I had a chance to, to talk with a number of different individuals. One of the individuals that I had a chance to talk with, uh, was Judge Newman, who is with the Family Court. And one of the things he really impacted upon me was our, in, in our city of Lawrence, how important it is to get our youth into different programs, excuse me, to really let them become active. Uh, he mentioned, quote unquote, "We're in a crisis level right now in our city when it comes to our youth", and that he really impressed upon me how important these programs are across the city to get them to get, do things after school, get them busy, get some skill sets. And I know that in previous council meetings, I had some real reservations, and you may have heard that from me in the past. Um, but after talking to him and actually, just by chance, I actually had a chance to meet an individual, uh, who was doing some work on, on, for the Water Department. Um, uh, and I was impressed by the young man who was doing some work for the city, and he was parting not of this grant, but the next grant we're gonna be dealing with. Uh, but I just wanted to, I guess, make you, my colleagues, aware that, um, that I had a chance to see this little firsthand, and when I get a testimonial from one of the most respected individuals in our, our region, Judge Newman, about this program, that means an awful lot to me, and I'll be supporting that tonight.
Thank you very much.
And I also wanna thank, I also wanna thank one of my constituents who was here this evening, uh, who's been very instrumental in trying to push these things through as well, and I wanna thank Ms. Fekkerworth for, uh, my council colleagues for, for support for these kinds of issues as well.
I wanna thank, uh, Ms. Fekkerworth too. She's been very supportive for this. Civic, just on both, civic engagement for these young people is critically important to try to help them find a way back, not only to constructive employment or education, but to feel part of the community. Many of these kids are isolated for a variety of reasons. Um, and as I, I gave a present, I'll talk about the SSYI Grant in a minute, but I mean, civic engagement is critical to what we do. But thank, thank you very much, Counselor.
I'm sorry. Any, anybody else?
I would like to...
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Mr. McCabe, uh, through you, Mr. President, it's very nice to see you again.
Likewise.
Yeah. I've been grateful of many of the ideas that, uh, you have brought to the city, even when you weren't official part of the city. So I really appreciate all the,
I love this city as much as you all do, so thank you.
All the work that you've put into our city. Um, my question is, are these the only, um, agencies that will be funded, or will there be a competitive bid for these subcontractors?
Well, because of the unique nature of the services and because these are grant-funded services, we have to sort of identify in advance when we apply to the state which are the community-based organizations that we're gonna be working with and describe the role they're gonna play. Um, in the past three years, we've expanded the number of age, of community-based organizations that have been involved with it, so we can actually spread the outreach efforts. So these are the only ones that are funded under this particular grant. Um, we do work with a lot of other agencies. It's another reason that I think, being in the Community Development Department, we're in a unique situation. Like, we, like, we work a lot with the faith-based organizations, uh, they obviously do similar types of outreach and counseling. So we, we try to include as many as we can, but these are the only ones we're, we're permitted by the state to actually fund with these funds.
Okay, because I was actually, I'm sorry that my voice is leaving me. I'm not pretending just to be sexy, you know? But, um, one of the things that I have been thinking a lot about, and I was happy to see that, uh, Counselor LaPlante, in being a little modest, but he was part of the public safety, the transitional team, and they also identify that it would be so great if we could bring Powell back. I mean, I've had fantastic experience with having that, um, organization in place, and I was sorry that there was no funding. When we had the, um, the old weed and seed, um, coalition, we were able to fund some of it, and, um, the state was funding some of it, and I was just like to find a way to do that again, 'cause they were very effective.
I'm actually glad you brought that up, because, um, again, with the combination of the two grants, um, just this past week, we, we reached an agreement with the YMCA that we can actually use some open gym time to, to, to start recreating the Powell Grant. We have a number of the school resource officers that are dedicated to do it, a number of the street team for the SSYI Grant, so we are doing that. Same with the weed and seed. If you looked at the, uh, again, it's the SSYI Grant, but if you look at the SSYI Grant, a significant portion of what we've been doing with some of the young people is actually going into neighborhoods and, and reclaiming, helping the DPW reclaim, you know, parks and actually make them, you know, part of the community. Not only is it a good thing to do for the parks, but it's actually a really effective way to do community outreach, because invariably neighbors will come out and say, "Oh, what are you guys doing here?" And they'll get to know the kids, and they'll get to know the street team, and that it creates a real sense of, of neighborhood mobilization. So we are doing that, and we, and we wanna do more of that. Um, so thank you.
And yes, that, that's an excellent idea, and I would also like to see the arts, um, in place when it comes to graffiti, to provide a, a valid canvas for the expression of frustrations and, I mean, I know in New York, we did that in the eighties, and I seem much younger, but, um, in the eighties, and it was pretty effective.
I hate to be a one-string banjo here, but, um, Counselor Almonte will tell you, uh, we've actually been working on an anti-graffiti, um, mural program in the city. If you recall the vacant lot down in the lower end of Essex Street, um, a number of our kids worked on that and worked with the Essex Arts Center to create the series of murals there with the musicians.
Oh, that's fantastic.
We've also done a mural down at the Costello Park, and we had some handball tournaments down there over the summer and some community-based events with the police.
Oh, the handball.
So we are doing, we'd like to do more of it.
It's been three, two years now.
Is, is exactly right. Yeah, so that's, I mean, everything you're saying is...
Thank you, Counselor Almonte.
Is right on the money, and it's, and it's all part of, you know, developing a program that we can handle and do well, um, you know, with, with some systematic approach to bringing to it. But no, absolutely, we're trying to do that too. And, and again, with that in mind, and this is under the SSYI Grant, um, this past summer, we did, we, with some of the individual counselors, we actually met with the counselors and actually target, tried to target specific activities within their neighborhoods, particularly during the summer. So I would invite any one of you at any time to, to contact me to discuss things within your districts, uh, community-wide. Um, you know, again, we're trying to make this as broad a collaboration as we can, uh, 'cause a lot of people wanna help in the situation, and it's just, you need the mechanism to be able to do it. So, thank you.
And do you do annual evaluations, or...
You mean of the...
At the end of each year, or at the end of funding year?
For the Shannon, for, yes, for both grants, we're required to file, um, uh, quarterly reports with the state and periodic, not only financial allocations of what we've done, but also programmatic stuff. Um, I like to think, and I do think, that, that the fact that the state's increased the Shannon Grant three years in a row...
Sure.
And, and the SSYI Grant since our first year, and we started from scratch, as opposed to a number of the cities, they've increased our grant significantly already, uh, for this year. So, yeah, we, we're required to report to the state, um, in a detailed manner, both financially and programmatically.
Well, thank you. That, um, I wouldn't mind please giving a copy of the, um...
Be glad to.
Progress reports, I don't know.
Yes.
'Cause it's, it's wonderful to know about the good things that are going on.
There are a lot of good things going on, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCabe.
Roberts, would you like to make that as a motion that he sends us a copy of the, uh...
Uh, sure, I'd like to. But we have a motion on the floor right now, though, right?
Okay, then there's, uh...
Let's put like that one in there.
That we can, okay. Are there any other comments, remarks, or any questions from Mr. McCabe regarding, uh, this grant? If there is none, uh, let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The ayes have it.
Yeah, and I now would like to make a motion that we receive, um, quarterly progress reports.
What do you have to do?
A copy.
Second.
Again, this is the SSYI, but I, I gave a, sort of a review of the past year's activities on the SSYI Grant, you know, as a, as a discussion vehicle, and I'll periodically update those for you.
Great, so we have copies of this now.
This was also submitted to the council. This is on the SSYI Grant, but the, again, the programs are sort of coordinated, so...
Great, I love to read it, and...
Uh, you should have a copy of it in your package, so...
I look forward to reading it, and, um, you know, people put so hard work, and, you know, I like to figure out if I can be supportive too. By reading it, I can maybe see how I can fit in.
Dialogue, anytime, anywhere.
Any other comments or discussion on this, on the motion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Counselors, is anybody, do, does anybody would like to move a document out of the table matters? I, I have one.
I make a motion that we move document two twenty thirteen on table matters.
There's a motion, and it's happened properly second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Could I, could I make one correction? Because when I put this on the agenda a couple of months ago, it was for the previous amendment the state gave us for, um, I think it was ninety-five thousand dollars. Since then, they've granted another hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars to us.
So it's ninety-five thousand plus a hundred and sixty-four?
The, the total amount I'm asking acceptance tonight is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Hundred and sixty-four thousand total.
Tell it, yes, please.
I make my motion to accept a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Seven, hundred and sixty-four, seven?
Hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Thank you.
Second.
The motion has been properly second. Discussion?
No, this is pretty much the same discussion we had, right?
If there's no other discussion or questions for Mr. McCabe, um, let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, can somebody please make a motion to take document thirty-nine ten out of table matters?
So move, second.
Properly second? Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nate? Roll call?
Yes, it's fine.
Is that a joke, or...
Yeah, it's a joke.
Okay, okay. Uh, ju, this is just for information. Um, uh, Counselor Bernard and I are gonna be meeting with, uh, our mayor, Dan Rivera, to review the work of the, of the committee. Uh, obviously, the, uh, committee under the, uh, leadership of Counselor Bernard had done a tremendous amount of work. There are several recommendations that are going to affect the charter, and, uh, we have made, uh, an appointment with, uh, our mayor, and we are meeting, I believe, tomorrow, um, to review, uh, the items that this committee, uh, is recommending. Uh, I know some of you, uh, I know, uh, a lot of these recommendations were done four years ago, so you may not remember, and I urge you, I urge you to review it, because there are very strong, very strong changes that, that we are recommending.
Did you get copies of it?
Yes, yes, uh...
Where is the...
Uh, I don't think we have a copy in...
Amendments.
Mrs. Bernard, can you, uh, can you make it available?
Yeah, basic, thank you, Council President. Through you, um, at the ordinance committee level, we had come out with, I believe it was twelve to fifteen recommendations. We did put them on a matrix at one point, and, um, I, I don't think that's actually in our packages, so I can make that available to everyone.
Okay.
And, um, but we'd also done was, provided everyone, which I can provide, basically it was just a copy of the charter, but it was set up in a matrix format, so that if you wanted to propose and edit, I was just suggesting propose it either typed or handwritten on the other side of the same document, so that we could compare, just for ease of legibility, and I had given that to everyone a couple of different times, but I can give that to everyone again also, um, just to get that.
Can we, uh, get it to Lillian, and then Lillian can place it in your, in the mailbox, so that you can review it?
True, yeah, and I think probably electronically is just...
Oh, yeah, that, okay.
Easier for some people to...
If you can send electronically, then that's fantastic.
Yeah.
That way you can review it at home.
Yeah.
Uh, pay good attention to the changes. I think there are a lot of positive changes that are going to make the city function better. Uh, and if you have any concerns, by all means, uh, make sure that when we start discussing this, um, make sure you ask questions. Uh, obviously, we are meeting with, uh, with Dan tomorrow. Uh, as you know, uh, the mayor has veto power on any recommendation that, uh, are made to make any charter changes. Uh, and obviously, uh, when we meet with him, because of the fact that he was here, as a member of the city council, uh, uh, we wanna make sure that we review it with him, and that he agreed or disagreed with any of the items, and, and be clear to us from him to which one, which one of these items he disagreed with and the reasons why. Uh, so it is important that, uh, that, that we do that. Uh, remember that we don't have veto power, and, uh, the mayor has the final word.
Mr. President, if I may, um, we do have, uh, we, we can take a vote on the council to rebut, uh, what is the...
We can take a vote, but we don't have veto power.
No, he has the veto power.
Uh? I'm sorry. Uh, override, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Yes.
We have the override.
Yes.
Council President, just through you, we, we actually had this exercise, um, and Councilwoman Donato led it, and he did an excellent job, um, two years ago. Change to the charter is a homeroom petition, so it requires six votes in the affirmation, plus the mayor's signature. If the mayor doesn't sign those six votes, with the six votes, the State House will not receive it. We can do whatever we want with it at this level. It will not be received by the Commonwealth, by the legislature, who has to make the final ruling on the homeroom petition. We actually, um, tried to sponsor legislation to change the state constitution, so that that would no longer be the case. If we had a supermajority, that that would be enough in our former government, and that was never voted on at the legislative level. We couldn't get the support there. But, um, on those homeroom petitions, the mayor does actually have, because without his signature, use the term pocket veto, veto, whatever you want, we can't go any further. We can't get it to the State House without his signature under our current state constitution. So we've had this exercise.
Yeah, we had difficulties before, but I was just talking in general. There is the override action.
Maybe not on homeroom petitions, yeah.
And, um, on the homeroom petition, it's my understanding that there is a way that you can send it, um, if you have someone to take it for you.
No, we have already...
But it won't have the same...
No, no.
Power as if your mayor signs it.
No.
We have a lot of...
We already tried, we already tried.
State House Council, they've gone through this really long time.
The, uh, the state legislator will not accept it unless he has the signature of the mayor. Now, there was a bill submitted by, uh, our representative, uh, Marcos Devers, uh, to s, to change the state leg, uh, to state constitution, so that all city councils across the state with city government of a mayor and a city council will have the power of overriding by two-third vote the veto of the mayor. Uh, that, uh, bill died in committee, and we are trying to revise that, hopefully. Uh, I, I thi, I think that what is good for the federal government, what is good for the state, should be good for the city.
Right.
And a balance of power, I think, is essential, so that government can function better. It, it works well at the federal level, it works well at the state level, and I think it should work well at the city level. But again, it requires a state, uh, stake, uh, change.
Right, and I recognize that with, uh, again, I recognize that with homeroom petitions, you do need six votes, et cetera. But there was a situation during the Darling administration, um, and I believe it involved, um, then Representative Jose Santiago, and it had to do with the, um, the construction of the, I believe it was the Water Department. It was billed, do you remember that? Uh, Counselor LaPlante was billed, uh, what is it?
I think they were looking, they're bringing in both the water and the sewer departments and enterprise fund. I think that was part of the situation that we were talking about back then.
Right.
It's many years ago, I can barely remember.
But that's what I recall, and why I was saying that it was possible to do so, but I'm gonna look it up.
Yeah. Can you recall whether it was a homeroom petition?
Yeah, it had to be.
It was?
It was billed something, something.
If you can research that, and we can...
Yeah, it was under the Darling administration.
Then we might be able to do something, but, uh, as far as we know, uh, we tried...
I'll look for it.
Okay, and I would appreciate if you could, thank, bring us back some information.
Again, it doesn't have, like, like you said, it, with the mayor, it, it, it carries a lot of power, but that was something that Representative Jose Santiago felt strongly about, so he, he walked it in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I would like to have a motion to table documented in ten.
Second.
Second.
It has been properly, motion has been properly made, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The ayes have it. Okay, are there any other items that are in the table matters that are?
Mr. President, I had one item, and I'm not positive if we'll be able to do this. I spoke to you about it briefly, and I thought I'd actually have Officer Scanlon's reports. At the committee level, we'd have two documents. One is document three sixteen dash thirteen, which was regarding parking at four-one-four Common Street, which is in front of Northern Essex Community College. They were looking for a two-spot, fifteen-minute drop-off, and then in document number three-one-seven dash thirteen is on Common Street, was regarding to four-twenty Common Street, where Northern Essex was looking for a parking spot for their shuttle bus. This isn't on your agenda.
Oh, okay.
You're saying, where is that?
Not on the agenda.
No, it's at the subcommittee level. It's at the ordinance committee level already.
Okay.
And I was hoping that we would have Officer Scanlon's reports here tonight, because their buildings are going, they have their grand opening. They just had their ribbon cutting at Northern Essex. Four-twenty is their brand-new building, just went online today. They're starting their classes there this week, and they were really, have hoped, they didn't understand the process, I think, that how long of a turnaround we needed for this, and without meeting December, it's been, just went down to ordinance. We haven't had ordinance committee since December fifth.
Okay.
So they were hoping that we could at least order the public hearing. We don't have the exact measurements in from Officer Scanlon. He thinks he would have those to Clerk Maloney by like Thursday, but basically, we would still be having a full public hearing on the item, so it's not as if people wouldn't have a chance to review the proposal at the public hearing. I just was hoping if we could get the public hearing ordered, pending Officer Scanlon's reports. I know he met with them, and I know he did recommend both, but I do, he just hasn't had the opportunity to do the measurements, because he went out to the facility for Northern Essex. But at four-one-four Common, it was two fifteen-minute parking spots in front of their door, and at four-twenty Common Street, it was one shuttle bus, which I believe is about the equivalent of four parking spots. We thought there might actually be a parking spot already on our ordinances, because at one time, the in-town mall had been the bus stop. Remember way back in like the late eighties? But Clerk Maloney was good enough to check our ordinances. We did not see that. We did see some other bus stops on Common Street, but that was not one of them. So I, it's your discretion. If you're, we'd have to, A, suspend the rules, then B, order a public hearing, and if that's something you're comfortable, I'd love to do it. If it's not something you're comfortable, it's a couple more weeks in the cycle.
I don't feel uncomfortable with that, but obviously, we will need to suspend the rules, so that this item can be included in the agenda.
Right, you need to suspend the rules.
So we need to make two motions. One, to suspend the rule, and then a motion to.
And then the second motion to treat it as an urgent matter.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, then pull it out of committee.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rule?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The ayes have it. Okay, the next motion is to.
Take the other side.
Emergency matter.
Emergency matter.
So moved.
Second.
It has been properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The ayes have it.
And then the third would be to order a public hearing on both document three-one-six.
Pull it out of committee.
Then we just do that with spending rules, taking an emergency?
Right, and then, now you say we want to pull these two items out of committee.
Okay, so.
It's just that.
Take them out of committee, please. I make a motion to take them out of committee.
Second.
Yes, the motion has been made, and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The ayes have it.
Um, no. The motion would be to take documents number three-one-six dash thirteen and three-one-seven dash thirteen to order a public hearing and request any requisite language from the city attorney for both parking, two short-term spots at four-one-four Common Street, and one full bus stop at four-twenty Common Street. Let me make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second. Any discussions, questions? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The ayes have it.
She already explained it.
Are there any other items? Okay, I think we need a motion, did we make a motion to table document thirty-nine, ten?
Yes, we did.
Yes, you did.
Oh, we did. Okay, thank you. Okay, new items. There are two items, document three-twenty-three thirteen and three-twenty-four thirteen, that I believe that we should.
Mr. President?
Remove without prejudice.
Mr. President?
Yes.
In reference to three, document three-twenty-four thirteen, I happened to be with Captain Fitzpatrick last evening, and he asked me, if he's not here this evening, he asked me to withdraw that from the new business.
Yes, we, I believe that the reason why I bring it to discussion is because we need, in these two documents, I think we need to give the, the new mayor the opportunity to do his work, and I understand that he's going to appoint a search committee, and obviously, by withdrawing this document without prejudice, doesn't mean that our present temporary police chief, Fitzpatrick, is not going to be taken out of the race, but he can apply it the same way. And obviously, the other one, document three-twenty-three thirteen, this was a recommendation by the former mayor, Antigua, and I believe that it would be fair to give the opportunity to Mayor Dan Rivera to make his own appointments and fill those boards with the people that he would prefer.
I would like to make a motion to take document three-twenty-three thirteen, which is the reappointment to Lawrence licensing board of Mayra Antigua, and three-twenty-four thirteen, which is the appointment of Lawrence Police Chief James Fitzpatrick, to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
Second, who's second motion?
Roger.
I second it.
Okay. Any questions or discussions? If there is none, let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, document three-fourteen, this is going to, the attention vendor license for Rafael Gonzalez, forty-eight Brooks Street, is going to be sent to the ordinance committee. Document four-fourteen, first quarter budget report, David Camasso Controller, is going to be sent to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document six-fourteen and seven-fourteen, also, this is a request by Semana Hispana and Lawrence. Both documents will also be sent to the ordinance committee. Document eight-fourteen, transition vendor license, thirty-four Sergeant Street, Sylvia Canseco Hernandez, also will be sent to the ordinance committee. Document nine-fourteen, acceptance of a private grant, racial and ethnic approaches to community health, this is a grant of forty thousand, will be sent to the Budget and Finance Committee. I'm going to skip document ten-fourteen for, just with your permission, and then we will go back to it. Document eleven-fourteen, street paving, payment and conflicts. I would like this document to be sent to both, the ordinance committee, because of legality, and also the Budget and Finance, to review the finances available for this problem here. Document twelve-fourteen, St. Patrick Days Parade, Saturday, March fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, is going to be sent to the ordinance committee. Document thirteen-fourteen, fiscal year, budget, two thousand and fourteen, year-to-day review, Budget and Finance. Document fourteen-fourteen, handicap parking, ninety-five Henka Street, is going to be sent to the ordinance committee. Obviously, the ordinance committee is going to have his.
Work cut out, yeah.
Work cut out of them. Document fifteen-fourteen, no parking, fifty-nine West Street, is going to be sent to the ordinance committee.
Council President?
Yes.
On document sixteen-fourteen, may I, I've spoken to David Camasso. He's asking if it's possible to table this item. At the council level, there is a request from the legal department to determine whether or not he has the opportunity to come before the council, and we could leave it at the table, and if it's, if it happens that way, then we can go ahead and work with that.
Yes, I agree with that. I have spoken to David Camasso, and I have told him that obviously, we need some legal opinion before we even decide whether to conduct the hearing or not. So as soon as we hear from our legal counsel, we are going to determine whether he's entitled to that or not.
Motion to table.
Would you like, I'm sorry, you're making a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Motion to table document sixteen-fourteen, city council hearing request for David A. Camasso.
Anyone second? It has been properly second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. The ayes have it.
Motion to table the full council.
At the full, yeah.
Okay, document eighteen-fourteen, the city's fiscal year thirteen financial order for review, that's going to be referred to the Budget and Finance. Document nineteen-fourteen, appointment to Lawrence Historical Commission, three-year term, that's going to be sent to the ordinance committee.
Personnel.
I'm sorry, personnel, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Personnel. Document twenty-fourteen, appointment on Board of Appeals, three-year term, Jose Pino, that's going to personnel. Document twenty-one-fourteen, appointment licensing board, six-year term, Pedro Torres, also is going to the personnel. Document twenty-two-fourteen, appointment Lawrence redevelopment authority, five-year term, Elias Rodriguez, is going to be referred to the personnel. Document twenty-three-fourteen, appointment of Lawrence redevelopment authority, five-year term, James Patrick O'Donohue, is going to be referred to personnel. Document twenty-four-fourteen, city financial quarterly report for the period ending on December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, for review, that's going to be sent to Budget and Finance. Document twenty-five-fourteen, snowplowing and the disabled and elderly, and elderly, this is going to be referred to.
Ordinance.
I'm sorry, snowplowing and disabled, is that a, averse? Is that a, a change in the ordinance, or?
Well, it might.
It might?
It might result in that.
Okay, then let me, let me send it to the ordinance committee.
No, I have a question.
Yes.
Should that read, "snowplowing for," or "and," or, because it says "and," and then.
Right.
So what is, I don't understand what that's supposed to mean.
It means that there are issues that I've been hearing from.
So it would be concerns for snowplowing for the disabled and disabled?
Yeah, something like that.
So it would be "for" instead of "and"?
It also involves working with the Department of Public Works to see how we can make it work.
Okay.
Okay. Document twenty-six-fourteen, Hevelin Donors, request permit for outdoor dining, that will be referred to the ordinance committee. Document twenty-seven-fourteen, Fountain of Salvation Christian Church Incorporated, request to use the Campanon, Common Park, and that's going to be referred to the ordinance committee. Now, let's go back to document.
And I have a question.
Ten-fourteen. I have been approached by some of you regarding change, changes in the meeting of the subcommittees, and the idea that has been brought is to, so that we conduct all the subcommittee meetings in the same week that we conduct the city council meeting. So that, the idea behind it is that every other week, all the city councils will have a week that they can work with to meet with their constituents, do some visiting across the city, and attend all the meetings with the neighborhoods and things like that. And I thought that by discussing it here, we can come to a decision if you feel that this would be favorable, and whether you like, this is something that you would like to do, so that you can have more time, so that you can, in order to use that time, to visit your constituents. So I would like to open for discussion.
Discussion. That would leave us Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and we have four committees. So that would mean that two committees would have to meet on one night, and then one of the other nights, I don't know. I don't know how the councils will feel about, I mean, I've got free time, I can meet, it doesn't matter to me, but it's just, I know that other people's schedules are a little more tight, and having, go ahead.
I apologize. Usually, personnel and budget and finance kind of meet on the same night anyway, don't they?
We did Monday and Tuesday.
Oh, okay. They usually, housing was on Monday, and I thought personnel and budget and finance would be kind of back-to-back usually on Tuesdays.
Yeah, and then we did housing on Mondays.
Yeah.
So, but then that would be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
If you kept housing on Mondays, just have it be the same week as the committee meeting.
So it would be the Monday before the next committee meeting? Would that, would that give ample time for the reports to come down for? They won't. Because the next day would be the full council meeting for that, for that previous week, right?
But we've done that, I mean.
Because if we meet on Monday, then the following Tuesday will be a full council meeting, so not all the reports for that Monday meeting would be there.
I don't know what's realistic. We have had Monday meetings, and what to do on Tuesday, and.
With the full council meeting on a Tuesday?
Not always, I mean, obviously, but there's been occasions where we have to do that, and it's worked okay. I mean, I don't, I mean, if we're to.
Mr. President?
I like the idea.
Yeah, in the, well, if you meet Monday, we've always kept the agreement with the city clerk, and Lillian, to send it, so that we can discuss it in the council meeting.
The next night?
Yeah. At least, that's what we used to do. But I think it would still be a problem, because there are neighborhood meetings that are conducted in the first or third week, so you still have the problem of missing some neighborhood meeting.
Yes, I think that is true. I don't think that we're going to be able to coincide with everything that is going on in our, in our city, but nevertheless, I think it will give us the chance to attend a lot of, a lot of the meetings that we would be able to. And I think, I think it will be beneficial, and obviously, it is something that, that we can, we should consider. Mr. Plante?
I think as a goal, we should try to do that, but my concern with piggybacking some of the meetings are, there is a certain rush to getting things done, because we, we all feel like we want to be considerate to the other members of the next meeting. I think for the free flow of the discussion, I'm a little concerned about having that dynamic in play. So if we have a first meeting, and then a second meeting, and everybody, so the second meeting shows up, and you're thinking, can we rush it a little bit, so we can get that second meeting? You're not allowing the full dialogue to go forward without feeling in yourself, and feel a little rushed about it. That's my first concern conceptually. My second concern conceptually is, I'm concerned about having a, as a typical occurrence, a meeting prior, the night prior to a full council meeting. My sense is that oftentimes, we, some of us can use the weekend to use, to digest, talk to constituents, et cetera, and as a last resort, we can use a Monday, should there be an emergency. So, in principle, I think we should try to do, we should have the kind of flexibility, that if, if we only had two meetings, committee meetings scheduled for the week, let's say this thing's referred to it, let's try to do it on the same week. But if it goes to four committees, I think we might be a little rushed by doing that. Just my thoughts.
Question, Bill, can we change the date of the committee?
Can you change the what?
Can we change the date of the committee?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So we can change the Tuesday to Wednesday?
Of which, like the?
Of the Budget and Finance, because that's, that's your concern primarily.
Yeah, Budget and Finance could be Wednesday.
Then Personnel will also be meeting on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
Yes.
I think that's his point, is if you have Personnel on Wednesday, and Budget and Finance on Wednesday.
I'm sorry.
Those are two, if I may, I'm sorry, put it over, those are two committees that sometimes we have some lengthy stuff happening there, and we're, we would be here for a very long time. See, that's the thing. We don't, there are days that we might not even have an item, but there, there is days that we might have, I mean, Budget and Finance, it's going to be discussed in length, especially if we have, if we have Mr. Vasquez as our, as our, as our head over there, I'm kidding, as our president of Budget and Finance, because he's very, he's, he's, he does due diligence in his work. So they're, they're going to be taking a little bit of time, if you come to think of, you know, and then Budget, and then Personnel. We don't want to rush any interviews, or anybody that we're going to be hiring for, to come into the city, and, you know. So that'll be, those are two committees that, to have them back-to-back, they're lengthy. Ordinance is kind of like the same thing.
That is, that is true.
We have lots of ordinance items. They might be short, but there's lots of them, because we're always taking on and putting. Because we're always taking on and putting off. And then the other one that's left, we've got Personnel, Housing. And when we do Housing, we've got plans and people and other ordinances that we need to deal with and letters from attorneys and all of that good stuff, so...
Okay. So the question is, should we also change the Personnel? And the only other data that will be available is Friday. If we... And again, if we are trying to make some positive changes here so that we can have a week off, that we can really reach out to our constituents, then I think that it might be nice to give in a little so that we can gain a lot. Again, it is up to you guys. I'm bringing it for discussion so that you can... You can air your opinion. Yes.
President, I don't serve on Personnel, so...
I don't serve on Personnel, so I don't want to speak for anyone on that committee. But one thought is hypothetically, say you put that on Fridays. You don't have to meet at 7:00 p.m. You can meet at 4:30. I mean, it does seem like the people that are on that committee, relatively local, they could make a local meeting at 4:30 or 5:00 o'clock. Still be out of here at 6:30, 7:00. I mean, just to throw that out as an option. There's nothing locked and stoned that says we always have to meet at 7:00 p.m. If that was something that that committee wanted to consider for themselves. I just throw that out there as a thought.
Let's put ordinance for Fridays.
I'll go for it.
I'm kidding. I'll give you Friday nights for ordinance. I'm taking my Friday nights. No, I'm kidding. No, I don't...
Excuse me. I think that the only two that would have the conflict is Budget and Finance and Personnel. Either one can move to Friday.
When there's a conflict.
Depending on what... How you feel about it.
Yeah.
Do you, Mr. President?
Vasquez.
For the past few years, we have done both committees on the same day, for the most part. Both Budget and Finance and Personnel. And we never had an actual conflict. I think there was only one day in which...
Because in Personnel, we really didn't... A lot of things got appointed, and then hardly nothing got appointed. But we're in a whole new...
No, but I think that if...
And a lot of things are going to... We're going to be doing a lot of due diligence in a lot of these committees, and that's the only reason why. Before, we did have them, but there wasn't that many items.
I have the floor, Councilor Ramon. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I do understand that. And I think that there will definitely be some changes coming from the new administration. However, if we're able to change the time for one hour or more, let's say, for instance, we did this before. Personnel will meet at 6:00 instead of 6:30, and Budget and Finance will start at 7:30 instead of 7:00. So... And we will know based on how the agenda would look like for the following week from the full council. So that way, we could identify and plan ahead for the following meetings. And I think that based on how the agenda would look like, we could say, okay, so Budget and Finance should meet at 8:00 because the Personnel meeting will definitely be taking two hours, and they start at 6:00. So it's a negotiation among us as to when we meet. But I think that it's definitely doable because we hardly had any conflicts prior.
We need 48-hour...
First...
Mr. President?
But we need 48-hour notice to post our meetings. So if we're going to be posting in the same week, that's... We have a problem with that.
Okay. Since... Let me say a few words and then, Councilor Bernard. If it comes to the point where one particular committee requires small time, we can move that particular meeting just once, whatever is needed, to a Friday. And since we have the flexibility with enough time.
If quarters are available?
Okay.
Entirely up to the council is to be...
So again, I think that I agree with Councilor Vasquez that we can do both. And if any one of those two committees requires small time, that that committee can choose to meet on a Friday at an early time. And that way, deal with the issues ahead. Yes. Hold on. Yes.
Thank you, Council President. The thought I was having too is, you know, this is the goal. The goal is to get everything on one week, to ease our schedule so that you actually have a week off, that you could say, I'm going to focus on my family this week. I'm going to focus on the council that week. So you can... That's the goal. But that's not to say, okay, we have the Chief of Police and the Chief of Fire both being appointed on the same week hypothetically, if that ever happened. Well, clearly, they might want to have two separate meetings even. They might say, well, we're going to have Personnel next week on Wednesday and Thursday. We're going to move it... I mean, these are our committees. We can call them as needed. And we can always give ourselves more time. So if you want to go longer, when we say we have to have it posted, if the meeting's already posted early, you can always extend it later. I mean, I just feel like it's so easy to say no. The harder thing is to find yes. And I do think that to say the goal is to get everything on one week. If it doesn't work on a specific week because there happens to be some unique circumstances, then by all means, have the chair person put it on the other week. If that's convenient for the committee. We're doing this as a measure of convenience for ourselves, to help ourselves. If it's not convenient, then be flexible and put it on the other week if you have to do that. But I do agree with Council Vasquez. They had been doing Personnel at 6:00, Budget and Finance at 7:30, and that seemed to be working for the group. To just keep it that same way seems to work. And if it doesn't, obviously, the chair people can make that modification. I mean, I think it's a neat idea. I'd like to see us try it. And if it doesn't work, if in the practical application it's not happening, we always modify it back.
Yeah, we can always modify it. Sandy, do you have a...
Yeah, that's fine. I was just concerned about the 48-hour notice because that's regulation.
Okay. Council Tumi?
Yes. From what I recall of our meetings last year, we had meetings back-to-back on, I think it was Tuesday nights, following the council meeting for Budget and Finance and also Personnel. And it was very rarely that they interfered with each other. There was, there was an hour or so we could adjust the timeframe. As to whichever one had the more work to do, we would adjust the timeframe. Personally, I personally like that. I'm not available any other days during the week myself. So to me, that's a very important thing.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so if I get the feeling that you guys seem to like the idea. So if we change the Budget and Finance Committee and Personnel to Wednesday, that will meet our needs.
Not my need, I select...
Not your needs. And, okay. So you have... Okay, you have a problem with which one? The... With the Personnel?
No, I'm on Personnel right now. Tuesday is good. It's good for me on Personnel.
Okay. So the one that you have a problem with is Personnel? The one that you have a problem on Wednesdays is the Personnel?
Well, also, I'm not on the ordinance. I pulled myself off the ordinance meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Licensing also meets on Wednesday.
I'm sorry?
Licensing.
Second and the fourth Wednesday.
This is not happening in ordinance anymore?
Licensing meet on Wednesdays?
Yeah.
They can... We can ask licensing to change to the other week. So that there is no conflict.
And Human Rights too. When do they meet? On Mondays. The Human Rights Commission meets also.
Okay, so we can ask them to meet...
We need to figure out that whole schedule.
Okay. Councilors. Obviously, there is a concern that Councilor Tumi will not be able to meet on Wednesdays. And we don't want to leave anybody out. So...
Is there a problem with the way it is set up?
There is no problem with the way it is. We are simply looking for more time so that we can do a lot more work in the community. I mean, that's the objective.
Well, the only one that really works, that really has a meeting during the same week that the council has a meeting is ordinance. All the others are the following week.
I'm sorry?
Currently, ordinance was the only one that had a meeting the same week the council had a meeting. All the other subcommittees met the following week.
Oh, I understand that. But again, the idea was to bring other meetings to the same week so that we will have every other week, we will have that week to deal with things in the community. That's the objective.
Well, do you want... You mean to say you want like Housing, Personnel, and Budget and Finance and Ordinance and Council in the same week?
Yes. That's the objective. So that the following week, you will be able to meet with your constituents and do other businesses in the community that are going to benefit the city.
Well, I don't... As far as Housing, Personnel, and ordinance does have a meeting on Thursday nights currently. But Personnel and Budget and Finance and Housing is free that week of the council meeting. Council has a meeting. So they can work with their constituents those weeks, those days.
If we keep it the way it is, the meetings... You will have meetings every week. If we change it, you will have meetings... You will have meetings every other week. You understand that?
I understand.
Okay. Now, do you have problems? Do you have problems with all the... Or Wednesdays? I'm sorry?
I do not have a problem with Tuesday nights. The other nights, I'm lined up and something.
Yes, the only problem with Tuesday night is that there will be two subcommittees meeting at the same time as the city council meeting. And it would be...
They can't do that.
It would be impossible.
They'll have all that week.
It would be impossible. It would be impossible. Again...
President, we go with whatever...
I'm sorry?
I'm ready to go with whatever works.
Well, with all due respect to Mr. Tumi, I don't want to leave him out.
Oh, of course not.
It would be... It would not be fair. Maybe what we should do is table this and give Mr. Tumi some time. He can come back. So that he will have some time to see whether there is any arrangement that he can make to accommodate this. And if not, then...
Council President, I have a recommendation that we keep the meetings as they are. And so we have our next council meeting, just so that we can have these meetings. Or how are we going to do this? Just at least so that we can have our meetings as we usually do for this quarter of the month. And then by our next council meeting, we have this hashed out already.
Okay. Then you want to make a motion to table this matter?
To make a motion to table this item.
Okay, Document ten fourteen. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it?
Okay, so...
Okay, councilors. Are there any comments that you would like to make before closing the meeting?
We need to...
All the committee meetings will be rescheduled.
We need to schedule them now.
I mean, the subcommittee meetings. You're talking about subcommittee meetings? Yes. The subcommittee meetings will be rescheduled.
Is there anything on the agenda?
No, there's nothing on the agenda.
Do we have stuff there?
This Thursday?
Yes.
We were talking about not having an ordinance meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. You mentioned... Yes. Council Bernard mentioned that he would like to postpone the next meeting of the ordinance committee. So please...
At least because it's the first one. In the future, she'll trust us.
So it would be rescheduled to the next scheduled meeting?
Yeah, just a regular scheduled meeting.
Yes, okay. Any other...
Well, I guess we'd be getting into the zoning, the zoning board meeting at that time.
Can we kick the zoning board out?
That's correct. Please be aware... Please be aware that at these subcommittee meetings, you need to select your own chair and vice chair. You have already a list of the people that have been appointed to the subcommittees. There are a number of other committees that I didn't put any names on. And obviously, this tends to be like odd-hack committees. And what I will do is look for volunteers when the time comes. Obviously, my vice president, Alvarez, and I will be visiting. We were going to spend time meeting with you guys in the different subcommittees. And we're going to break up so that we can not only participate in those meetings, but also to give you support.
My support and...
And anything that we can do, we will be glad to help you. Okay, so... Yes, Sandy?
So our next meetings will be as follows. Budget and Finance will be next Tuesday.
Yes.
At 6:30, Ken? Or 6:00?
Yes.
Seven?
At seven?
Yes.
So Personnel would be, would you like, Roger, 6:00 or 6:30? 6:00, since we have a couple pending matters? So then, Eileen, I mean, Councilor Navarro, ordinance?
We're not going to meet.
You're not meeting?
We're not going to meet.
And for housing for Monday, we're going to do 7:00?
Housing?
7:00 Housing.
Okay.
7:00?
Just may I address through you, Council President, the former chairperson? Is there anything on the housing agenda?
I think following the election of the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we go on.
There is a lot on... And the Housing Committee, actually, I met with Councilor Plant, and there's a lot of things that are...
Are coming?
That are going to be discussed. There's a lot of activities that I think we think are worthwhile to bring to the Housing Committee that definitely... It's going to take a long time to bring to fruition.
And are there any table items that are there that perhaps you guys can...
We did a lot of cleanup of the Housing Committee agenda during the last council session. And so it's pretty close to being... It's pretty tight at this point. There are a few items on there. But, I mean, I'm just a member like everybody else on that committee until we have that election. But my sense is that we should meet... My sense is we should meet real quick. Of course, the Council President has the authority to call the meeting whenever he feels he wants to call it and call for the election, whatever he wants to call for it, because there is no chair. And hopefully, we can have that done that evening. And then...
Definitely.
And I would think we would adjourn fairly soon.
Yes.
And that'd be that for that evening, a pretty quick meeting, I would think. Okay?
Yeah. And I just, Mr. President, with your permission, I just want to share that I know I saw a few faces when I was asking particular questions about the public hearings. But when I first came on to the council back in ninety-nine, I didn't ask questions, and we got bamboozled with a particular contract. And then we were going crazy on how could we undo what we did. So it's my style to ask questions and know really what I'm going to vote on before I vote on it.